It's my pleasant duty to welcome you to the annual meeting of the Seaford Town Council, to welcome those who are here and those who will later on be watching online or from home. So, welcome all. I need to read you quite a long introduction to the meeting, so please bear with me while I do that, because it explains how we'll go ahead with the meeting this evening. So again, my thanks to all the members of the public, councillors and officers who are joining us for today's meeting here in Seaford Baptist Church, and also those watching the live feed at home. Please be aware that the council is live streaming this meeting, and this will go direct to our YouTube channel. While the physical venue for the meeting is different, we are endeavouring to keep to the usual meeting format as best as is possible. There are, however, some key changes I ought to highlight. Councillors looking to speak will be invited to do so by the chair in the usual manner or need to come to the lectern at the front to speak unless you have a microphone on your table. Please do not touch the lectern or the microphone, the microphone is especially difficult to disinfect. For councillors that have table microphones, the sound technician will be unmuting your microphones when you're invited to speak. Members of the public are invited to participate in one of three ways: remotely via Zoom, physically in the meeting, or by submitting a written statement which would be read out by an officer. Those members of the public looking to participate via Zoom will be invited to do so first at the relevant point of the agenda. Zoom users are reminded to keep yourself muted until you are invited to speak. The technical host will prompt when it's your turn to speak via the chat function, so please keep an eye on the chat function which will be at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Members of the public physically in this meeting room will be invited to speak next. Please raise your hand in order to show you wish to speak, and the chair will invite you to come to the lectern in the order you indicate. Please again refrain from touching the lectern or the microphone. Finally, a council officer will read aloud any written statements that have been submitted. Public participation is limited to a maximum of four minutes per person and must be relating to an item of business on the agenda, and clearly the agenda for the annual meeting is different from the agenda to the ordinary meeting. You do not need to state your name when you start speaking if you do not wish, but we ask that you clearly state which agenda item you are speaking about. The public Zoom will be closed once all the public participation has taken place, and the meeting is then on the Town Council YouTube channel by livestream. I must also run through a few key health and safety points for those physically in the meeting room. Face masks must be worn at all times, except when you're speaking in a microphone or have a medical exemption. The fire exits are via the main entrance that you entered through into the venue or through the access point for people with disabilities. The assembly point is out on West Down Road to the east of the building, and if you're able to do, please go up towards the unmade section of Wilmington Road. In the venue, please limit your touching of shared services as best possible, though I can confirm that tables, chairs and other such surfaces and facilities have been cleaned ahead of the meeting. Please remain seated unless you are invited to speak or need to take a comfort break. The toilet facilities are by the main entrance doors. When moving around the room, please maintain your distance from others. I would ask that participants looking to leave the meeting wait until the end of an agenda item in order to limit distractions to other participants. Voting by councillors is done by a show of hands. Please be sure to make sure your hand is clearly lifted and keep it up until the chair has called the vote. If you must leave the meeting for a comfort break, please do so between agenda items whenever possible to limit distractions in the meeting. If the meeting goes into confidential session, a short two-minute break will be held to allow members of the public to leave and to stop the livestream feed. To all present, please remember to show respect to others in the meeting and avoid interrupting wherever possible to enable others to follow the meeting. If any councillor feels concerned about any aspect of the meeting or discussion, please clearly state point of order; the chair will then gesture for you to elaborate. If anyone present is felt to be behaving unacceptably, a proposal can be made by any councillor to have them ejected from the meeting. This would need to find a secondaire and be voted upon before being enforced. Thank you again for listening. On behalf of the council, I would like to thank everyone for attending this meeting and all those of you who are watching this on our live feed. So, thank you for your patient listening, and that sets the context for the meeting. So now we come to the agenda for the meeting itself, and those of you who have agenda packs in front of you, we're now on page one, and the first item on page one of the annual meeting agenda is the election of mayor for the municipal year 2021. And the rules say I stay in the chair until we have an election. So do we have nominations for the office of mayor?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to nominate yourself, Councillor Rodney Reed, to be mayor for this municipal year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other nomination? I think we have one nomination, I think that's the only one, yes?
Yep, no other nominations.
Okay, we go to a vote then, those in favour of Councillor Rodney Reed being mayor for the next year?
That's unanimous.
That's fine. Thank you for the confidence you've placed in me again. Congratulations, Councillor.
Seaford Town councillors, officers of the council, members of the public, if you are able, please be upstanding in respect for the town base presented to the former Seaford Borough of Seaford by Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth I, and to herald the Platinum Jubilee Year of our sovereign, Queen Elizabeth II, and to greet your new mayor for the municipal God save the Queen.
Thank you. Please take your seats. Why do you think there's a declaration to make?
Oh, yes.
Well, while we're getting on to this...
We just have to sign a piece of paper and then we can get cracking.
I should say that I came to Seaford, I moved into UK and came to Seaford to have a quiet retirement, but now I find myself in the position of mayor for the second time, so thank you for your confidence to let me do this again a second time. So this is the Declaration of Acceptance of Office. I, Councillor Rodney James Reed, having been elected to the office of mayor of Seaford, declare that I will take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to observe the Code of Conduct of Seaford Town Council in the performance of my functions of that office. So I now sign on the basis of that. So thank you, I've now changed from my being ex-mayor for 2021 to being the mayor for 2122, so we will continue the meeting with the new mayor and the chair, so thank you, we proceed. Now we come to item three on the agenda, this is the election of deputy mayor for the municipal year 2122. I'd like to move from the chair that the deputy mayor that I would nominate would be Councillor Jean Cash. Would anyone else like to make another nomination other than Councillor Cash? So would someone like to second that? I think I'm looking at Councillor Honeyman at that point. So there's no other proposal? No? Right, so the nomination for the office of deputy mayor is Councillor Jean Cash, that's being proposed and seconded, so all those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. We come to item four, to consider apologies for absence. Town Clerk, do we have any apologies for absence?
Yes, we have apologies from Councillor Rutland from Councillor Adiel, and also from Councillor Cash who is able to join us by zoom.
Okay, thank you, three apologies noted. Come to item five, which is disclosure of interests. To deal with any disclosure by members of any disclosable pecuniary interests and interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and the Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. Does any councillor have a disclosable interest in this meeting? No? No, I see none. But we now move to public participation, and do we have any, Town Clerk, do we have any public participation? The order we were going to take this, I think, was, who was to go first?
Yes, so in terms of, so yeah, so in, just to say, actually, just, actually almost as part of this item, I think maybe Councillor Cash actually wants to say a few words by zoom, is that correct, Councillor Cash? She's mute at the moment.
Okay, so to Cash, we need the microphone working.
You've got it up. Councillor Cash, I think you're mute. Is that? Why is it not coming through then? Excuse us everyone, we'll just get this, get it up and running as soon as we can.
Just to fill in the space while this is happening, does any member of the general public who's here wish to speak later? No?
No.
Do we have, I'll just want to ask Councillor Cash, do we have any written statements?
Yes, I've got a couple of written statements to do in a minute.
Okay, well, we'll bring Councillor Cash into the meeting. Just to say that I've enjoyed working with Councillor Cash as mayor and deputy mayor
Councillor Cash, do you want to try again?
Councillor Cash, I think if you make your statement again, I think we shall hear you It does build up a sense of anticipation though, doesn't it? Still can't hear her.
Sorry about that, we'll try again in a minute.
Ah.
That's hopefully a good voice. She's still, she's still speaking, there's nothing coming in.
Well, I'll just say this then, if I can make, the chat's not enabled. Oh yes, it is, sorry.
I think there's somebody other than Councillor Cash. Yeah, that's certainly not Councillor Brett. Want to try again? Okay, Councillor Cash for the third time, do you want to try again?
I don't know whether anyone will answer me, but we'll see.
Christine, we can hear you.
No, I can hear nothing at all, Jean, nothing, it's not fair, is it? How frustrating, we're not even going to try this in Lewis, we're not having it livestreamed or anything.
Right, I don't know what else to do, I can only sit and talk to you really.
Talk to me, yes, how are you today?
Councillor Cash, we can hear you now.
Not very well, otherwise I'd be there.
No, I know that you've been there, but I'm going to send a WhatsApp and maybe somebody will see it, just to tell them that Jean and I are on Zoom.
Councillor Brett, we have a conversation with you and Councillor Cash at the moment.
So it must be their end, because we're okay.
Jean, we can hear you. Jean, every time I speak you go quiet, can you hear me now? I can hear you.
I think perhaps if someone sends an SMS to Councillor Cash to say we can hear her.
Georgia, can you chat, send something in the chat to tell her to speak?
Yes, we can hear, we heard Councillor Cash, we can hear Councillor Brett as well. Was anyone else, what else can I do, Rodney? I used to think using Zoom from home was difficult.
Well, hoping you can hear me.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank you for having the confidence for voting me in as deputy mayor for another year, and I look forward to working closely with the mayor as I have done in the past, and all of you as well. I'm sorry I can't be with you, and look forward to when I can join you again.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Cash. Is it now that Councillor Brett's indicating to speak?
Just to let you know, Jean, they said they can hear you, and you've got applause, but that's all I know, I don't know anything else.
Right, thank you.
We might as well have a cup of tea now, because we can't see what's going on. Bye, everybody.
Fine.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your perseverance, not just for my long introduction, but for the effort of getting into that, but it's good we can have people join in remotely, and we could have Councillor Cash and Councillor Brett with us tonight. I don't think there's anybody else on Zoom who wants to participate. No, I think there's only two.
No, that's it.
I think now the, I think there's been nobody in the room who wants to come in for the general public.
Can you go on livestream then in the meetings? I can't do that, obviously.
It's the written statements.
Thank you, Chair. Just to say, in terms of this part of the meeting, we had two written statements, both of which were relevant to the representation on outside bodies, and in this case relating to the Bishopstone United Charities. We've had a written statement from Penny Lower, who was acting as one of the two representatives, although not a councillor, and also from the chair of BUC, both of which have contacted us to have said in the meeting that BUC very clearly and unequivocally would like to continue with their current arrangement of one town councillor and one other representative, in this case Mrs. Lower. So I wanted to make sure that all councils were clear about that, and of course will actually pick up the decision of that when we get to this part of the agenda. I think it's also fair to say that both members of the public have made it clear that they wish that we had, the council had communicated more clearly with them about this matter, because they weren't, you know, they didn't feel they were properly informed, if you like, about what would be happening or potentially changing the outside body representative for this, for BUC. So I think it's really important that we hear that, and obviously I've contacted both to let them know we're making that clear within this meeting, and also to apologise for any miscommunication and make sure things are clear with them going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to item seven, but before we do that, I've realised what I ought to have done as the meeting started was to introduce Adam Chuggers, our town clerk, to his first physical meeting. He's been present to numbers of other Zoom meetings, but the first time in the flesh, so to speak, so.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. That's very kind.
We come now to item seven, which is Declaration of Acceptance of Office of New Councillors, and to note the declaration by two councillors. And, Andrew, do you want to take us through this?
Yeah, just to say that the meeting needs to just note the election of councillors, Adenija and Councillor Payne, we welcome both of them to the Town Council, and to say that they have both signed and witnessed a declaration of office with myself ahead of this meeting, so they're both fully participating this evening, and welcome to the council, thank you.
So the meeting notes that, and if the two of you would like to wave towards the camera over there, then it means that the general public watching will know who you are.
Thank you, Chair.
Excellent. So thank you, those declarations of acceptance have been signed, and now we are in a full council of 20 members, so thank you both. We come now to the young update. I understand there's a verbal report, there's a written report that I think will be read by a town clerk.
That's correct, Chair, thank you. So yes, this is item eight, the young mayor update. First of all, wanted to recognise our outgoing young mayor, Chanel Pritchard, who's done an amazing job. It's fair to say that obviously during Covid restrictions, she must have faced some challenges in the role, and it certainly wasn't a typical year, but she certainly didn't let this stop her, and she's managed to raise a fantastic £1,564 for her chosen charity, which is the Kent Surrey Sussex Air Ambulance, so congratulations to Chanel for that amazing effort during the year. Yeah, thank you, everyone. In the town council's recent town forum presentations video on YouTube, and in recently circulated press releases as well, Chanel has thanked all who have supported her and wished the new young mayors the best of luck in their new roles. We at Seaford Town Council also want to pass on our thanks to Chanel for all her hard work over the year, her determination to succeed, which was truly inspiring for us all, so thank you, Chanel, and good luck for the future. I'd like to move on now to, I'm delighted to be able to congratulate the new young mayor of Seaford, who's Joseph Lacy. Joseph was elected to the position following elections for young mayor held at Seaford Head School. Joseph's meeting with town council officers and the mayor over the few weeks ahead to put in place the plans for his year, and we're all looking forward to working with him very much. We'd also like to congratulate the deputy young mayor, Erin Franklin, who was also elected at the elections held at Seaford Head School. Erin will deputise for and work closely with Joseph during this year, with a view to then becoming young mayor in May 2022. Updates from the young mayor will come to each full council meeting, it's a standard agenda item, as many councillors will know, and we'll also keep up to date through press related young mayor Facebook page, but the standing item also gives an opportunity for the young mayor to raise any issues they wish to raise to the full council each time we meet. Should anyone have any questions or wish to discuss any mayoral engagements with the young mayor, please do so by the mayor's secretary, who is Sue Treadwell. Just to say as well, by way of background, Seaford Town Council has now had a young mayor since 2009, and was the first town council in the South East to have such a role. The role of young mayor is key to ensuring that the voice of the youth in town is heard and considered by town council, and also that what the town council does for the town is getting back to younger people. In addition to this, as we've heard in the case of Chanel, many young mayors also take the opportunity to fundraise for local charities or specific good causes, and generous to churn by the town over the years has been amazing. So we're really looking forward to working with Joseph and Erin over the years and help them achieve their goals in their terms of office. Thank you very much.
And as our newly elected mayor of Seaford, I'd like to pass my congratulations and greetings to Joseph Lacy as the new young mayor, and to Erin Franklin as the new deputy young mayor, to say how well, how good it was to work with Chanel and James in the year that's just passed, so congratulations to them, and we look forward to all this youthful enthusiasm coming through. Let's move on to item nine, and this is the committee memberships, and this is pages eight to 10 of your report pack. I think I'd like to invite the town clerk to lead us through the committee memberships in terms of who has been, who has put themselves forward in terms of serving, and who we need to appoint newly to committees.
Thank you very much, Chair. As the report says, we're going to approve the existing committee structure, appoint members to the committees and subcommittee, the appeals committee in this case, appoint chairs for relevant committee, vice chairs for relevant committee, and appoint members to the standalone appeals committee. So in terms of item one, as it says in the report, we're not aware of any suggested changes to the existing committee structure, so what we'll do is, obviously, when we vote, we'll be voting through all the recommendations during this part of the meeting, but I just wanted to just double check that there's no proposals for change at this stage. Councillor Everton wishes to speak, so you need to get to the mic.
Yes, I just wanted to say I've had a change of role...
So you can take your mask off when you're speaking?
I've had a change of role at work, and I wanted to come off golf in the view of planning and highways, because I have two evenings a week now, and remain on community services, if possible.
Thank you, Councillor Everton, that's noted, and as I say, we will remove those from the list, thank you. Okay, so Councillor Everton has neatly moved on, moved us into the second item, which is to appoint members to the standing committee and subcommittee. So how this is going to work, we're going to do, we'll do them in the order on the sheet that you have, so I'm going to go committee by committee, and what I'll do each time is I'll ask if there's any changes to the list in front of you, in other words, anyone on the list want to come off, or does anyone wish to join a committee that isn't listed? And then, and then once we've completed any amendments to the committee, I'll ask you to vote to approve that membership. Once we've completed all of the membership of the committees, we will then go back, and then we will elect the chairs and vice chairs, but we're not doing that at all, everybody knows which committees they're on, if that makes sense. So we'll do the committee memberships first, and then after we've completed those, we'll move on to the chair and vice chair, and then at the end we do appeals, because the membership of the appeals committee depends upon the outcome of the other decisions we make about the other committees. Everybody followed that? Great, okay. So Finance and General Purpose Committee, is there anyone on that list who wishes to not remain on the committee? Does any other councillors wish to join this committee? You'll see we've already noted the request from Councillor Payne to join this committee. And just to say that Finance...
And just to say that Finance and General Purpose Committee has had 11 members for some time, so we're happy to keep it at 11 for this meeting, going forward if councillors are happy with that. Okay, so I see no changes, so can I have a proposal for this membership of FNGP? Councillor Lawrie, do you want to try to speak? That's all right, Councillor Lawrie, no worries. So would someone like to propose this membership for FNGP? Thank you, Councillor Borman, any seconda? Thank you, Councillor Warraven, and can everyone, can I have, are all those in favour of this membership be shown?
That's carried.
Unanimous, thank you, Chair. Okay, same thing, community services, anyone on this list wish to stand down from community services? No, anyone wish to additionally join? No?
We have a request to change, councillor Honeyman?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did I say this list, councillor Reed, I mean the sheet in front of me.
Oh, the sheet, oh, sorry.
I'm so sorry, I should have made that clear. So yes, as it says, that includes adding councillor Olivia Honeyman, so thank you. All right, thank you, councillor Reed, okay, so again, so do we have a proposal for this list? Councillor Payne, thank you, a seconda? Councillor Dunn, thank you, and again, if we'd like to show those in favour of the list. Thank you very much, that's carried as well. Okay, same process, yes, councillor Adenijie, yes.
From the microphone, please.
Thanks, so Chair, hope I'm not being pedantic, but if we're going to have level members on a committee, surely we need to re-vote on agenda item number, the first item, to actually maintain the structure to be level members, because the structure says 10 members.
So just to make this clear, the committee structure is this one, which is laid out at the table.
Yes, and it does say 10 members for each committee.
Just to say, that's a very good point, I mean, just as I was trying to say, in the case of both Finance and General Purpose Committee and Community Services, previously the council has voted to allow 11 members on to these committees, so I'm sorry if that wasn't clear within the report, actually, the report maybe should have made that clearer. So it's a perfectly valid point you're making, councillor Adenijie, but I was just going with the custom practice that had been set for these two committees.
Yeah, I think the committee, you know, the whole point is to say, on these two committees, it's 11 members.
Yeah. Perfect. No, no, it's a completely fair point, and we'll make sure that it's noted in the minutes in the meeting, thank you, councillor Adenijie. All right, so Planning and Highways, the list in front of you shows councillor Everdham standing down and councillor Payne wishing to join this committee. Anybody else on the list wishing to come off, or anybody wishing to join this committee that isn't shown? Okay, in that case, councillor Warraven, you wishing to speak?
In the past, we desperately need people to join the Planning and Highways, we're currently two short, now we're three short, and sometimes, especially during holiday time and during the winter when people are sick, we're very near our quorum, so that can be, we can have more volunteers to come on Planning and Highways, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So taking that point, would any, we'd be cleaning at least one, possibly two more to join the committee, would?
Councillor Everdham, what's the speaker?
I'm staying on the meeting like I have done, because I have to work every second Thursday in the evening now, so I'm happy to stay on if everyone accepts that it'll be like one out of two or one out of three if you can't get enough people.
Thank you, councillor Everdham.
I think tactically it's better to have someone who's available than to not be corate, so, thank you, councillor Everdham.
Thanks, councillor Everdham, that's very kind.
Anyone else be willing to volunteer to join Planning and Highways?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, I think we have to go with what we have.
So we'll go with, as I say, with councillor Everdham still on the list, and councillor Payne added to the list. Can I have a proposal for that list, please? Thank you, councillor Hidda, and a seconda, councillor Meek, thank you.
Do we put that to vote, those proposing seconda, those in favour?
And those in favour, please.
Yes, that's carried.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going now to Gulf, I'll keep going in the order on the sheet, so I'm going now to Gulf and the View, as I say, standing down councillor Everdham and councillor Brown, and putting themselves forward councillor Reed. Councillor Brown, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I'm off the committee, I just want to not to be chairman or vice chairman, so I wish to stay on the committee.
Thank you, councillor Brown, for clarifying that, sorry, that was my mistake, I'm so sorry. Yes, so councillor Brown is staying on the committee but not wishing to be chair, so in fact what we're doing is we're taking out councillor Everdham and putting in councillor Reed. Okay, is that clear to everybody? Anybody else wish to join this committee? No? Any more, for anyone else to Gulf and the View? No?
I think we need a proposal and seconda.
So proposal and seconda for this list, thank you councillor Brown, seconda, thank you councillor Edson, and can we, again, please show in favour of this list? Thank you, perfect, all right. Now we come to personnel, and as you can see, we have one, two, three, four, six, one, two, three, can I count, one, two, three, four, six councillors showing themselves wishing to stand again on this committee, and councillor Reed asking to come off. Any other councillors, councillor Dunn, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and by the way, congratulations on your reelection, I'd like to know if yourself is coming off this committee, does that mean there's a vacancy? I'd like to, if possible, put myself forward for personnel, but then I will come off grievance and disciplinary.
Yes, so that's councillor Dunn, wanting to, offering to come, so yeah, offering to come on to personnel.
Yeah.
And off grievance and discipline.
That would be fine, because we'll still have six for personnel, so that will be fine, councillor Dunn, so we'll put you on that list.
Does anyone else want to offer for personnel? No, we have the right number then.
We have the six then, okay, thank you. So again, can we have a proposal for this list, please? Councillor Warraven, thank you, seconda councillor Edson, and again, please show for the six councillors we've named now for personnel.
That's carried.
Perfect. All right, so now we come to grievance and disciplinary, so we're removing councillor Dunn, leaving the four councillors listed. Would anybody else like to join grievance and disciplinary? Is it going to, or will it be these four councillors? Councillor Payne, would you like to speak? Or you'd like to join the committee? Perfect, councillor Payne is going to join grievance and disciplinary, that's brilliant, thank you. Thank you, councillor Payne. All right, so can I have a proposal for that list of five councillors, please? Thank you, councillor Borman, and a seconda councillor Meek, and again, please show for this list? Thank you.
That's carried.
Okay, so that completes the membership of the committees, as I say, apart from appeals, which we have to do after we've done everything else, because the membership is dependent upon who's chairing, partly on which, on chairs and membership of committees. So if it's okay with that, councillor Meek, do you wish to speak?
Could I suggest that for members of councillors who aren't here, maybe they could be encouraged to join the Planning and Highways, because we're so short there, and I wonder, you know, if they're not aware of that, it would be good to make them aware of it, because I think we do need more people there, thank you.
Yeah, that's a point well made, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, great point, and we'll make sure that that's spotted up, that'll be in the minutes, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go on to the chairs list. Now you'll see my colleague, the executive office has very helpfully shown you the current, the position as at the end of the municipal year on the left hand side, and then previous indications of interest, if we may put it like that, on the right hand side. But leaving aside the sheet, we have to elect these posts, you know, every time, if that makes sense, so this is really for guidance, but anyone wishing to be chair or vice chair has to be proposed to be able to be that, take on that post. Did that make sense to everybody with me? Okay, so I'm going to take them again in the order we did before, so can I have any nominations for the chair for Finance and General Purpose Committee, please? Anyone like to nominate? Councillor Borman, would you like to speak? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'd like to propose councillor Mark Brown.
Thank you, councillor Borman. Do I have a seconda for that? Councillor Warraven has seconded that, thank you. Are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, in that case, in that case, sorry, I'm going to note, oh, thank you, that's a great point, sorry, just to say that, just so you know, councillor Meek, that there is also delegated authority to fill the Planning and Highway spaces if absent councillors want to join, so we wouldn't have to elect them separately, we can, you know, get them on to the committee outside of this meeting as well, to further help with that. Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, I'll come back to this one in a minute then, I'll do, I'll complete this part and I'll come back to that, that's fine, okay. We've got to work on our notes, our note system to each other, clearly, especially the understanding, the understanding by the recipient is the issue. Okay, so sorry, I'm so sorry, were there any other, any other nominations for chair of FNGP? Okay, in that case, can I see all those in favour of councillor Brown chairing this committee? That's carried, thank you. Okay, so now can I have any nominations for the vice chair of FNGP? Councillor Brown?
I'd like to propose councillor Payne as vice chair.
Thank you, do I have a seconda? Councillor Borman, thank you. Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, so can I see all those in favour of councillor Payne? That's carried, thank you, so those are the posts for FNGP. For, let's move on to community services then, so can I have any nominations for the chair of community services? Councillor Dunn?
Councillor Olivia Honeyman as chair of community services.
Thank you, councillor Dunn, do I have a seconda? Councillor Meek, thank you, and any other nominations for chair of this committee? Thank you, okay, can I see all those in favour of councillor Honeyman, Olivia Honeyman being the chair? That's carried, thank you. Okay, so now nominations for vice chair of community services, please, anyone wants to nominate someone for vice chair of community services? Councillor Borman?
Yes, I'd like to nominate councillor Lynda Warraven.
Thank you, do I have a seconda? Councillor Everdham, thank you, any other nominations for vice chair? All right, so again, can I see those in favour of councillor Warraven, please? Thank you, that's carried. Planning and Highways, can I see any nominations for the chair of Planning and Highways? Councillor Honeyman, Olivia Honeyman, councillor Richard Honeyman, would you like to speak?
Thank you, everyone, I'd like to nominate councillor Lynda Warraven for the chair of Planning and Highways, thank you.
Thank you, do I have a seconda? Councillor Borman, thank you, any other nominations for chair of Planning and Highways? No, okay, can I see those in favour of councillor Warraven, please? Thank you, everyone, that's carried, okay. Do I have any nominations for the vice chair of Planning and Highways? Councillor Argent, did you want to speak?
Councillor Argent.
Councillor, okay, do you want to speak, councillor Honeyman?
Thank you, everyone, again, I'd like to propose councillor Borman for the role of vice chair, thank you.
Councillor Borman, okay. Do I have a seconda for that one? I do, from councillor Payne, thank you. Sorry, councillor Argent, did you wish to nominate somebody as well, sorry? No, no, okay, so any other nominations for vice chair? Can I see all those in favour of councillor Borman then, please? Thank you, that's carried, thank you. All right, so then Gulf and, excuse me, coughing, Gulf and the View, can I see nominations for chair of Gulf and the View, please? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Argent as chair.
Thank you, do I see a seconda? Councillor Payne, thank you, all those in favour, sorry, any other nominations, I'm sorry, any other nominations for chair of this committee? Not, there are none, okay, now can I see in favour of councillor Argent, please? Thank you, that's carried. Now we move on to vice chair of Gulf and the View, can I see any nominations for vice chair, please? Councillor Borman?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate councillor Bill Payne.
Thank you, do I see a seconda? Councillor Olivia Honeyman, thank you, okay, any other?
Can I just check, councillor Webber's in the room, councillor Webber's currently listed as vice chair, to see wish to continue?
Thank you, councillor Webber, for clarifying that, any other nominations? Okay, so can I see those in favour, please? That's carried, thank you, all right. Okay, so moving on to the right hand side of the sheet, we're now going to personnel committee, okay, so any nominations for chair of personnel committee, please? Councillor Olivia Honeyman, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Don Edson, please.
Thank you, any secondas for that? Councillor Richard Honeyman, thank you, okay, any other nominations for this chair? No, okay, so those in favour, please? Okay, thank you, and then can I have nominations for the vice chair of the personnel committee, please?
We should have said that was carried, so.
Sorry, that was carried, Chair, sorry, yeah, so nominations for vice chair of personnel, please, councillor Olivia Honeyman?
I'd like to nominate Dave Argent, please.
Thank you, do I have a seconda for that, please? Councillor Edson, thank you, and any other nominations? All right, so all those in favour, please? Thank you, that's carried, thank you. All right, so that's personnel, and then grievance and disciplinary. Okay, so nominations for chair of this committee, please? Councillor Everdham, you wish to speak?
Councillor Borman.
Thank you, councillor Everdham, okay, anyone like to second that one? Councillor Warraven has seconded that, okay, any other nominations? All right, can I see all those in favour, please? That's carried, thank you. All right, can I see nominations for vice chair of this committee? Councillor Everdham?
Councillor Brown?
It's great stuff, the speed is impressive, do I have a seconda, please? Councillor Warraven, thank you, okay, and all those in favour? That's carried, thank you. All right, so now we come to the membership of the appeals committee, and I just want to double check that the names listed here, none, I can't see anyone who's precluded from being a member of this committee, and are there any of the, are all of those councillors still happy to remain on that committee? That's a yes, so can I have a proposal for this list, please? Councillor Borman, thank you, and a seconda for the list? Councillor Payne, thank you, and can you show if you agree with the list, please, or happy to approve it? That's carried, thank you very much. So now we come finally to the chair and vice chair of the appeals committee, so can I have a nomination for any chair for this committee, please? Councillor Borman?
Yeah, in his absence councillor Jeff Rutland.
Thank you, councillor Borman, do I have a seconda for that? Councillor Olivia Honeyman, thank you, okay, can all, any other nominations? No, okay, so can we show if we're in favour of that, please? That is carried, thank you. Nominations for vice chair, councillor Everdham, ready, is poised.
Happy to stay as vice chair.
Thank you, just, I think someone else has to nominate you, thank you, no, that's, Honeyman, that's, councillor Honeyman, that's fine, yeah, perfect.
I nominate councillor Moira Everdham as vice chair.
Thank you, do I have that seconded? Yes, I do, councillor Argent, I'll take councillor Argent at that time, thank you, or any other nominations? All those in favour? Thank you.
Carried.
Congratulations, everyone, we seem to have appointed. Congratulations everyone, we seem to have appointed our, our committee officers for the year, so well done us. So in just, so looking at the motions in front of us, we have done, we've, we've, in terms of returning to item one, I would, I might ask if anyone would like to propose the further amendment that was passed to it, that I misunderstood?
Just to say we're on page eight for those who are following the agendas at the moment.
So, so Chair, is it okay to ask someone to propose this, that the, there are given delegated, delegated powers are granted to fill further spaces within the Planning and Highways Committee, so that other councillors are able to join?
Yeah, I think we need to say who the delegation's to, the delegation to the proper officer.
Is it, yeah, proper officer, proper officer?
Delegation to the proper officer to sell, to fill vacancies. Councillor Borman's proposing that, someone second that, councillor Warraven?
Thank you, and all those in favour, please? That is also carried, thank you. So I believe that all the business under this item has been concluded successfully, thank you everyone.
So do we need to take all five recommendations together to carry them, or are we saying they're carried now?
I'm saying that they're carried.
Okay, meeting's clear on that.
People happy with that? Yeah, we're getting a nod, we're getting nods, that's fine.
So Agenda item number nine, the five recommendations are carried. Okay, thank you. We're now going across to item number 10, and we're on page 11 of the report. Councillor Representation on Outside Bodies.
Yeah.
Artan Clark, again, please.
Thank you very much Chair. So, so as you, as you can see, here is the Outside Bodies Policy Review, and as I say, this report is to present, prevent revisions, present revisions to the council representation on outside bodies policy for adoption, and the motion is to adopt the Town Council representation on outside policies as presented within the report. So how we're going to do that is, I'm very, is that I'm going to quickly run through the section of the differences, and, sorry, actually I'll do that for next, so actually, I'm, no, the differences are contained within the report and are shown, again, within the document and the track, and the track changes that come with that. So, sorry, I've just got to address-
And just to make it clear, we're not looking at the who will be outside body representative, this is simply the policy for it. And a good deal of this involves inserting the word town into the policy on the basis of its consistent branding.
Thank you Chair. So I'm very happy to take any questions or comments on the paper that's been presented to you.
So if you'd like to speak about item 10, could you please indicate?
Councillor Edson, you'll need to be over here.
I think when we have another of these meetings, we may have some strategic seating in terms of there may be a competition for seats around the microphone, but so-
Yes Chair, I, I wondered if we could possibly increase the membership of the Seaford Community Partnership in light of the fact that they've, you know, they've got, you know, quite a bit of money to play with there, and there's only one councillor on it, and I'd like to be on it.
Yeah, I think that's a sensible thing to do, but I think that may come up in the next item, so that-
Yeah, okay, that's fine, we'll note that for the, for the next item on the agenda.
And councillor Honeyman?
Good to take the point, councillor Richard Honeyman, please.
I can see where the councillor's coming from, but I have to, have to say that with the, with the expanse of the cares as well as the SCP at the moment, and we've got SCP as where the main grants are, if the second councillor is on there, I still think it's very unclear to know what the roles of both the councillors will be doing at this given time. So unless that's substantiated at this given time, and I wouldn't really recommend having a, having a second councillor on that particular body, unless they go on to the cares bit at the same time. So that I'm very unsure of, that is given at the moment, so.
I think-
So I think it needs to be reviewed basically, and then adopted as, as when it's a bit more clear. That would be my, my recommendation.
I think we need to come back to this in the next Agenda item. At the moment, we're looking at the external representation policy, and certainly in terms of membership of external bodies, the body itself has a decision on what they're prepared to, to take. Councillor, councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you Chair, it mentions in this that we're elected at the annual meeting, which obviously we are, but we have had in the past, obviously councillors resign from positions, which means then we've left with vacancies. And it has been agreed previously with council that if there is an outside body to be filled, that it'd be emailed to all councillors, and councillors will come back, and that's obviously not in here, it's just stating the annual meeting. So I wonder whether that's something along those lines can be added?
Okay, thank you. Is everybody happy to do that?
So this would be an amendment to say that we would- A bit from the microphone, please. From the microphone, please.
Excuse me Chair, I thought 5.3 does exactly, does that, 5.3 gives the town clerk, so 5.3 does specify what you do if, if, if a member drops out during the year, so there is no need for anything else to be done?
Very good, for careful reading of the paper, it's well done.
Yeah, I think that's coming as a track change, so maybe that wasn't clear in all, in terms of the, you know, maybe the previous iterations, but in this, thanks to councillor Edsoni, in this iteration of the report, that, that change is there, so good to make sure we definitely have that. Okay, any other questions or comments about this report? Good to clarify that.
And for the avoidance of doubt, any track change is actually underlined, isn't it, that's the-
Yeah, yeah, so it's the track changes version. So in that case Chair, shall I hand over back to you to, to ask for this to be adopted?
Yeah, so we come to the recommendations for Agenda item 10, and the recommendation, the council's recommended to adopt the Town Council representation on outside bodies policy as presented in the report 6.2.1. Can somebody propose that, please? Councillor Warraven, someone second this, councillor Dunn? Let's put this to the vote, those in favour, please show. That's carried.
Carried.
Now we come on to the item 11, which is the review of the Town Council's representation on outside bodies and appointing representatives to those bodies. So perhaps if I could pass back to Artan Clark for this one?
Yes, thank you. So you will see here, there is a report in front of you. Included within the report are the proposed changes, and please bear in mind in terms of the bishops, the United Charities, the submission from the Members of Public that I gave at the beginning of this meeting. And then following that is the list of the outside bodies as we'd understood it at the moment, in other words, the current councillors with requested changes. And just to be clear, when we come to that part of the meeting, I'll seek to make sure that list is correct with all of you, okay? And then once we have a correct list, we'll vote to approve it. And also picking up on the discussion that's already taken place, any changes in terms of increasing numbers of representatives would then need to be agreed by the outside body themselves. So councillors can accept additional members to a group in this meeting, and we're that Seaford Town Council is happy for those additional people to go on, if you like, but that will be subject to agreement with the outside body themselves. Does that make sense to everybody, have I explained that, okay? So what I, so what I mean is, is that the list we agree tonight may undergo amendment when discussed with those outside bodies, if that makes sense? Okay. So I think that covers that. So within the body, just briefly, and then I'll, I'll come to any further comments or questions that people have. One point, I would highlight 1.5, and to say that under 1.5a, the recommendation now is to be amended to, to carry on with the current arrangement as recommended by the outside body themselves. Okay, so I want to be, make, make clear the amendments to 1.5a within this report before we vote on the report. Okay? So with that being clear, the other proposed changes are in front of you. So before I go on to the list of councillors and who's on which body, I'm happy to take any other questions or comments about this report before we move on to that. Councillor Warraven wants to speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the bishops and United Charities. One of the reasonings why there is only one councillor on the body is because you do become a trustee.
Yeah.
And in 2019, Penny Law is a past councillor, and she's done extremely good work since then on the committee. We've got a good committee there together, and, and I'm just pleased that she's happy to continue. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Warraven, that's really helpful intervention. Any other quick questions or comments or matters to raise under this report? Councillor Richard Honeyman?
Hi Leah, thank you again, and I do actually agree with councillor Edson in sense of, probably having to, if it's substantiated by the Chair of Cares and the Chair of SCP, then I think, I think they could be over two councils, as long as the roles are, are clear, so. Maybe it's more, as you said, maybe it's more of a consideration.
Yeah.
As opposed to blanket, but I don't know if it can be substantiated by a report or something, by, by SCP.
Yes, we could, we, I mean, as I say, we certainly would wish that, I mean, I suppose it's a logical extension of what we've already covered, isn't it councillor Honeyman? To say that obviously full council would wish to know the, the ultimate outcome with any of the outside bodies as well, so we would, what we would have to, we can commit in these minutes, if you like, to reporting back to full council the final position where anywhere there were any issues to resolve with the outside body. Perfect, let's do that, thank you. So I'll make sure, we'll make sure that's in the minutes in terms of the meeting, so there's clarity for councillors going forward, and it's helpful to have, you know, identified the way forward together tonight, so thank councillors for their interventions that's enabled us to do that, that's been really, really helpful.
Okay, so in terms of the representative reports between pages 23 and 42?
Yes.
Which is the, the first recommendation is to note them, does anyone have any point, queries about any of the reports, anything to add to any of the reports? Or can we simply note them as they are inserted into the report? Anything to add, anything to query? No? Okay. So we can, you know, we can work our way through these recommendations now, I think?
Yes, so consider the recommended changes that's sublisted 1.5 below. I'm going to, I'm, I would, you know, be, councillor, councillor, we want to speak, sorry, I didn't look, I was looking down, not looking up, please, excuse me.
It's fair to say in these meetings, we're used to looking at a screen about three feet away, rather than looking around the room.
It was on councillor Meek's report for the CTLA.
Could you give us the page number, please?
Recommending not, sorry, recommending not to have representation.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel disappointed that there haven't been, you know, you haven't been invited to any committee, meetings, because I think originally why we had representation on this was because the large loans that, not loans, grants, that's it, sorry. Large grants that the council has given the CTLA in the past, and I think, you know, a membership should continue for that reason. And I think, you know, they should make contact to whoever councillor is on.
Just to make it clear, this is page 24 of the report, back?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor. So councillor War, I think Chair, what I'd like to suggest is, would it be helpful to work our way down these, down 1.5 now? And then we can deal with any amendments as we go. Sorry, does someone want to speak, so I look down again? Councillor Edsoni, please, please speak, sorry, I keep looking down at the paper, I'm so sorry.
I didn't want to preempt, you, you, because you said you could walk your way down there, but I think just following on from what councillor Warraven said, I've worked with CTLA in the past, they are a very, very valuable community group, and I think it would be a shame if we lose track of helping them, so I do think we, we need to take proactive steps to actually try and work with them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, so in terms of A, so, so Chair, are you happy to go down the list and, and get councillors to do this item by item then?
Yes, I think, we're on page 18 now, so in terms of 1.5.
So 1.5a, just to say, can we vote on the amended recommendation, which is, as I say, to, to continue with the current arrangement as we were explaining before? So shall we start there councillor?
Yeah, so we need a proposal that we, for item 1.5a, that the representation remains as at present?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Someone propose that?
Councillor Warraven's proposed that, seconder? Councillor Edson's seconded it?
Those in favour? Carried?
That's carried unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, so then CTLA, again, we've heard two councillors say that we should keep this, 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 this representation, so Chair, shall we treat that as a, can we treat that as a proposal and seconder?
Or would councillor Meek like to withdraw the proposal, the initial recommendation? No, you don't. Sorry.
I'm sorry Chair, I, I just feel that, I mean, I've been representing that for two years now, and it's probably my fault for not being in touch with them, but they haven't reached out to me, but if the, if the council feels they want a representative on the board, that's fine. I don't want to be that representative, but I will-
That's a good clarification, so, so we would, we would withdraw the recommendation not to have somebody on the board, on the, on the, recommend, not to have a representative on the CTLA, but councillor Meek does not want to be that representative. Okay, with that clarification, we can proceed. So we, the, the proposal then is that we do, we do continue with the Town Council representation on the CTLA. Someone propose that?
Councillor Warraven?
Someone second that?
Councillor Edsoni, thank you.
All those in favour?
That's carried Chair, thank you.
That's what we shall do. Lewis District Association of Councill, Local Councills, reduce the represent, number of representatives from two to one, as per Appendix A, Report F. Anyone want to put up a counterproposal to that? No, someone propose that for me?
Councillor Payne, thank you.
Councillor Payne, someone second that? Councillor Warraven, those in favour?
That's carried, thank you Chair.
Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group, the Steering Group should be, the, neighbourhood plan says the Steering Group should be dissolved when the neighbourhood plan's been approved. So there's a, as, as you've read the report, there's a, there's a, it should be noted, there's a requirement to review it in three years hence. I think we're saying that we want, I think the officer recommendation here is to consider this at a later date.
Yeah, that's right, when the time for review comes.
I think we simply pause on, there's no actual recommendation for 1.5d.
Yeah.
1.5e, we believe this is no longer a live body. I think again, we, we were looking to pause this until we actually get some clarity from the, from the Port Authority and the Dino Transport, yes? So this is our pause. Item 1.5f is simply to note a name change.
Yeah.
That's now gone to Seaford.
Okay, cool.
1.5g, recommendation, discontinue representation on this outside body, Seaford Cricket Club. Anyone want to put a counterproposal to that? No? That's okay, somebody propose that then, we discontinue representation of the cricket club?
Thank you councillor Lord.
And someone to second that?
Thank you councillor Hader.
Okay, those in favour? That's carried.
That's carried, thank you.
Tree Wardens, a note to rename, change of name, just trees for Seaford.
And we're recommending to increase the number of-
Yeah, this is, this is actually saying that we initially talked about two representatives- at the beginning. The problem was the size of the room and they're now saying that two is still, two is possible.
Okay.
So this, so this in 1.5H is actually a recommendation, we confirm what's actually the case at the moment, we have one attends and one helps. The proposal is to have two external body reps to the tree wardens. Someone propose that for me?
Councillor Meek, thank you.
Councillor Meek, who was second that, councillor Borman, those in favour?
Thank you.
Carried.
That completes that item.
1.5.
So, so chair, I'm going to move on now, I think, to the appendix A. And just to, I wanted to ask was, you've all see the list in front of you. Are there any amendments needed to that list? Is there anybody shown here who is not, you know, is either not a representative or doesn't want to continue to be one? And/or would anybody like to join a group who isn't shown here? Just to say, I'm including, I'm assuming requested changes are accepted already. So councillor Adeniji, yes, please speak.
Excuse me chair, I'd like to put my name down for CTLA.
Thank you. Great, I'll add that to the list now, that's very helpful. Okay, are there any other additions that people wish to make? Councillor Meek?
Thank you chair. Did you mean additions to the list or additions to the numbers?
I probably meant either. What I mean is, what the question really is, are there any further outside body representation that councillors wish to undertake, other than the list that's printed in front of us now?
Okay, I just feel that we're working closely with the Seaford Environmental Alliance.
Yes.
Which is an outside body that I think we ought to have representation on. Having said that, I'm a trustee of the Seaford Environmental Alliance, so I didn't know if that ought to be made a kind of official situation, in which case there could be one representative and it would be, could be me. Doesn't have to be me, but it might be good if it was somebody else, as I'm already a trustee. So I just put that as a kind of suggestion to everybody that, because we are, you know, we are working together on the Climate Action Day, so.
I think I hear that as a proposal to have a representative on the SCA committee. So does anyone want to either comment or second that? councillor Olivia Honeyman, would you like to speak?
I was going to second that proposal and I wouldn't mind putting myself forward for that as well.
Thank you councillor Honeyman, brilliant. Okay.
So we have a proposal and secondary that SCA be added to the list of external bodies for representation.
So we need to pass that amendment?
Yes, we put that, so would someone propose that then? That we add Seaford Environmental.
So we just had a proposal, seconded, just need to have it voted on.
Okay, it's voting on having SCA as an external body, so that needs to put to the vote.
All those in favour of SCA having an external representative? That is carried chair, thank you.
So now we come to who? And we have councillor Lydie Honeyman offering to be that person. Does anyone want to stand as well?
Anyone else want to stand for that? Okay, so I'll add that to this list and I'm going to ask you to approve the whole list in a minute. councillor Lord?
For the microphone please?
Yes, thank you. Seaford Otters and Leisure Gardens Society, I notice that position is vacant. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to put my name forward if that's possible.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lord.
Perfect, thank you, that's really helpful. As I say, where there are vacancies, we can fill them, that's really good news. Thank you councillor Lord. Georgia.
Yeah, and just to say, before we, before we come to the vote, that leaves, I'm delighted that councillor Adeniji's come forward for Seaford Head Supreme Court, thank you councillor, because that was vacant. And all, but also, the only, therefore, the only group listed here with no one standing on it amendment is Seaford Head Golf Club. So I just wanted to make an appeal, if you like, for any councillors to be an outside body rep on that committee. Doesn't like, do I have any takers at the moment?
Can I just check for?
Councillor Brown, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'll have a go at that.
Thank you councillor Brown, perfect. Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
That's a persuasion of better than I thought, right there. Okay, great, great, okay. So I think I now have a complete list for you to approve. Is there any, any other points or further amendments before I ask you to approve the list? Georgia, you're waving at me. Yes, so just to be clear, that's why I asked the question, any further clarification? So to be clear, we've also, as councillor Honeyman confirmed, subject to agreement with Seaford Community Partnership and the appropriate systems being put in place and report back to full council, we're going to add a second representative to Seaford Community Partnership. And councillor Edson's indicated his willingness to be that second representative. So that's also that he goes on to that list as well. So I hope this list is still reasonably clear to you. Councillor Borman?
Yeah, the Lewis District Association of Local Councils, we voted earlier to reduce that number to one, but there's two representatives standing on it still.
Well spotted councillor Borman, thank you. I think I'd like to suggest, can I, could I ask those, the two councillors to confirm between them who the one will be? And we will confirm that back to full council?
I'll speak to you, between councillor Brown and councillor Edson?
Yes. Okay, so we'll have to note that in the minutes, Georgia, okay? That we'll confirm back to full council who the one will be between you. Yes, I think. Councillor Adeniji, please speak.
I'm getting nods from both sides of the room saying that's what they're content to have happen.
Okay, brilliant. All right.
Excuse me chair, I don't know if this is the right section. A group which I have a vested interest in, and I didn't want to be amended. It's the stakeholders group on health issues. I did make an approach to one of the council officers to find, to ask for a minute or a report of that group.
Yes.
And I couldn't find any report last year. I'm mindful that this is, this is a very important group to Seaford. And obviously, I think, I just want to implore the three members of the group to do something and if they're stuck, I'm prepared to help. I do not want to be a member of the group, for I don't want to see this group die either.
Perfect.
Can I just check the name of the group again?
Stakeholders group on health issues.
It's the one, the other. Yeah, so I was looking, on the other side of the page.
Again, that's recorded in the minutes councillor Adeniji. As I say, the group, the group, as you say, some time ago, this group was meeting because of what was going on around this issue at that time, that I know you're familiar with. And obviously during the Covid times, there haven't been further developments and so the group has not met again. But clearly, we will, the group exists so that we have the capacity for it to meet in the future, should it be needed, and your support is noted and welcomed. Okay, councillor Olivia Honeyman?
I'd just like to say, it's been quite helpful having the times in here. I would like to go back on the stakeholder Seaford group, because I used to be on there when I was a councillor previously, but the meetings are in the daytime. So that admits, but I'm really pleased there's much more information on here now about the actual times of the meetings are on, which we've been asking for a lot.
Thank you, and thank you for that feedback as well. Okay, so are there any other last comments before I ask you to approve the list that we have now determined? I'm going to ask for someone to propose the list we've now determined, please. councillor Borman, thank you. And councillor Argini's seconding. Okay, can I, sheer show of hands for those in favour of this list? Thank you everybody.
That's carried.
So just looking back at the motions chair, have we covered all of the motions for this item?
I think just to make it clear that we have. We've noted the representative reports, we've considered the recommended changes, we've avoided members, having voted on the amendments. So I view that we've carried through those recommendations and they are, but they are all carried.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to item 12, and this is now the fixed asset register. We're on page 43 for those who are working their way through the packs. And the councillors recommended to adopt the fixed asset register as of the 31st of March 2021, as attached to appendix A. And appendix A is starting from page 46. So does anyone want to ask questions about the report or the details of the fixed asset register? Don't see anybody signaling to speak. Nope. Okay, can we, someone have, someone please to propose that we adopt the fixed asset register as, 31st of March, as attached as appendix A. councillor Everden?
Councillor Everden, thank you.
Someone second to that councillor?
Councillor Borman?
Councillor Borman? Okay, we'll have show of hands, those in favour?
That's carried, thank you chair.
Now we're coming on to item 13, and this is the annual subscriptions. And the full councillors recommended to approve the town council's annual subscriptions for 2021, 22, as set out within the report 321 and the spend therein. And you would have noted that in under 1D, there's £163, we probably won't need spend. Does anyone want to talk to this report? Town clerk, anything to say in introducing it?
I can see councillor, I'm going to pass the councillor down who wants to speak please, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. K, Survey Monkey, I know we have used it in the past, but do we have to be a regular member of it? Can we not do it on an ad hoc basis where we just, when we decide to do a survey? Because there are plenty of other, maybe better survey programmes out there. I just wondered if it's, because it's £300, quite a lot of money to be regularly paying.
So this is 1.1K? And the question is whether we need to be paying for this, for this online survey tool? And is there something that would be, I think the first question would be, how often do we use it? And is it value for money at 300?
Okay.
Anybody got an answer to how often do we use it? Straw poll of the councillors here, does anyone remember having had a survey in front of them using Survey Monkey recently? I think councillor Dunn, we need to say that we need to refer this one back to, for further information from the officers.
Yeah.
Councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you chair. I think that the councillors are probably aware that East Sussex Association of Local Councils is struggling a little bit at the moment. There used to be Sussex and Surrey, and they've now broken away. So I suggest that we keep an eye on what's going on there to make sure we're getting value for money.
Yep, point taken.
Yep.
Excuse me chair, regarding the item K, Survey Monkey. I'm inclined to keep it. There aren't many free decent survey tools. Yes, you can use Google Forms, but again, it's not, it's not user friendly and it doesn't give you, it doesn't give you the power to play with data. What Survey Monkey gives you, more than many things else, is that you can, you can do anything with the data you've got. And I think as a council, we do need to, if we're not doing enough, if you haven't used it before, we do need to proactively engage with our residents. And Survey Monkey lets you do that. And many councils are doing consultations, and I'm sure there'll be many needs for consultations in the months to come. So I don't think we should start penny pinching for £300. I think it does add a lot more value to the council than that.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Everden?
I just wanted to comment on Survey Monkey in that it's, it's only value for money if you don't use it. If you do even just one survey, it's going to cost, it costs over £1,000 to do an individual survey if you're not a member of something like this. And with all the changes we're thinking of, looking at over the next years, I think we're going to have to have a lot of public consultation, so it is value for money, because one survey alone is about £1,000.
So councillor Dunn, are you content with those explanations?
Realised that if you did it individually, how much it would cost, so thank you for that councillor Everden, thank you.
Thanks councillors for that.
From the point raised on 1.5KL, I suggest we will leave this to our RFO to decide whether this is something we, it's worth saying for.
And that's sensible.
Yeah, I think to have, yeah, RFO, keep this, leave it in, but leave it to the RFO.
We can all show that in the minutes to review, I guess that one's RFO.
The usefulness of that. So we're on that basis, can we move to the recommendation itself?
Yes.
Okay, the recommendation is to approve the town council's annual subscriptions for 2021, as set out within report 321 and the spend therein. Someone propose that, please? councillor Liz Borman? councillor Mark Brown? Those in favour? That's carried, thank you. Now, by my watch, it's 8:25 and we've come to the end of this section of the meeting. So there, because of the meetings running back to back, you won't be taking a comfort break at this stage. If later on you feel the need for one, please use the gap between the agenda items to do so.
Thank you councillor.
So thank you, that concludes the, all of the, all of the business for the annual meeting 2021. So now we move on and we're coming to the, the actual agenda itself for full council, and this is page one of the second pack you have. So are we ready to move on to the?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, we're all good.
All right, so agenda item one, we still have the same apologist for absence councillor Rutland, councillor Cash and councillor Dill. I think there can't be any other apologist, nobody's managed to connect the meeting net. Disclosure of interest, does anyone have any disclosable pecuniary interests or interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the Seaford Town Council Code of Conduct and Localism Act 2011 in relation to matters on this agenda? No, I don't see anybody disclosing for that. Public participation, do we have any participation in person on, do we still have the Zoom on or is it now going to be, no, it would only either be in person or in writing. So do we have any, I think there's no other, one member of the public here? No representations we know of?
No written, no written submission for this meeting. Apart, let's say they were all in the first meeting, the previous meeting as we cover.
Okay, thank you, let's move on to item four, which is the minutes. Need proposals for these minutes to be taken as correct records. I think on the basis that councillor Dunn was still chair of the Community Services for that minute. Councillor Dunn, would you propose the accuracy of those minutes of 4.1?
Mr Mayor, yes, I approve the minutes of the Community Services meeting of the 29th of April 2021.
Yes, I think we're noting those as correct record, I don't think we need to have a second for that. FNGP councillor Brown, content with those?
I would say we accept the minutes as read, chair.
Thank you.
I'll propose full council for the, no, 4.3, I was away, that was councillor Cash sharing, so somebody who was actually there. Someone propose these?
Councillor Borman's had a hand in that. 27th of April, full council.
Yeah, they're saying the 27th, someone proposed that?
You were there.
It was only the 27th, sorry, it's, the year passes. Planning of highways, three of them councillor Warraven. And, okay, I think we are just required to have those as noted. So those in favour of noting, sorry, you want to speak to that, sorry? Okay, we'll take, we'll take all those together. Are you all content to take those together as one block? We've noted those? Yes, thank you. Item five, we have no town council working group reports. Is there any district or county councillor who want to produce, wants to update us at this point in time?
No. Oh, yes, maybe, I don't know. Councillor Borman?
So with the district council, obviously we've had elections, there hasn't been any meetings, so, but there'll be an update for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Our Lewis County councillor?
Yes, excuse me, Mr Mayor, it's against the same thing, the county council meets next week, hopefully we can start getting updates from May.
Thank you, we look forward to reports at our next meeting. Thank you. Let's move on then to item seven, and this is the town clerk's update, and we're on pages, reading from page nine of the pack.
Thank you chair. As you can see from the report, I've kept the same structure I've been using since my arrival in December, which is incrementally build the report as we go, so you get full,
arrival in December, which is incrementally build the report as we go so you get full accounting for the work of the clerk and the work of the council and maintain that transparency. For the purposes of this meeting, the updates are the text in green, so the text that's black is the previous text and the text in green is the updates for this meeting. Hope that's clear to everybody.
It is, except those who've got black and white copies.
Yeah, okay. But, exactly, so as long as the, this is not one of those secret comments, isn't it? Absolutely, but we could go another time. But anyway, so the green text is the updates. I want to just highlight a couple of things from the report and then again, I'm happy then to take any questions or comments from councillors. As I said at the beginning, I want to publicly welcome councillor Adeniji and councillor Payne to the council and congratulate them on their election and it's great to be working with both of them as new councillors going forward and it's great to be back to 20 councillors. I think that's fantastic for the town to have that complete representation. I've also covered the, I've covered a few other key items. In terms of the work around re-welding and part of our climate change commitments, we're going to be bringing an update report on that to full council in June. The staycation work agreed at the March full council has been taken forward. As I've noted in my report, we have had a couple of people raise concerns with us about using the Martello field as a car park. We've explained to the people raising the concerns the reasons for this decision but we'll obviously continue to monitor the feedback of that quite closely as well. Also within the report is about how we've been following the government roadmap in terms of Covid-19. Golf course reopened successfully, the View has reopened successfully and obviously our concessions are also all opening as well and we have a physical meeting here tonight. So, again, we're implementing necessary steps around the Covid roadmap. Also within the report, as I've highlighted, over the summer, we're going to begin the process of refreshing and updating the strategic priorities of the council, so that one's to come. I've alluded to the year-end financial position, you've all had an email from the RRFO giving you financial information for our year-end, but I wanted to put on record the amazing work of all the councillors and officers to produce that financial improvement over the last 12 months and as I say, our level of general reserves have now increased to over £300,000. We know from the budget setting meeting, our auditor is advising us to further increase that for our long-term financial sustainability, but of course, it's very positive to report the improvement that's happened within the last financial year. I've mentioned the fact that in terms of the section 106 news, we'll be bringing a report on the work being, to be undertaken to a future full council, the June one or the August one. In terms of the tennis courts, the loan has been applied for and we're waiting for the outcome of that. We've also been addressing the issue of the further erosion of cliffs on Seaford Head, the new crack and further cliff pools that we've had and a paper is coming to the Golf and the View committee meeting in June to begin to consider if any changes will need to be made to the course in the medium and long term because of the cliff erosion that's happening. And the final item is an unfortunate thing to close on really, but obviously sad to report the recent leak at Seaford Town Football Club. I want to thank our officers for the proactive way they've stepped forward to help the football club straight away and also make sure that necessary safety measures are taken, quick assessment of damage and stuff like that. We're liaising with the relevant insurers and also other professional advice and we will be reporting back to councillors of any costs that will need to be borne by the town council themselves because of what's happened. There is a possibility that we may face some costs here. We do have some budget to pay for some of these costs, but if there are any unbudgeted costs, that will come back to councillors for approval. So, I've given you all an update, but do continue to watch this space in terms of developments around Seaford Town Football Club. Those are the matters I wanted to highlight this evening, thank you for listening, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Any questions, any comments the town clerk? councillor Brown?
I'd just like to say I like the layout of the new meeting minutes, I think they're much easier to understand in the way that they're laid out now, well done.
Okay, thank you, compliment for the officers, it's great stuff. councillor Meek?
Thank you for your report, town clerk. I just wondered if as of now, I know that you said you're going to give an update report in June, but I just wondered if you could tell us exactly now, what is the progression of the Martello toilets? Have we found an architect? Is there, you know, just so that we know, so many residents are still kind of saying what's happening with the Martello toilets? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you councillor Meek, very happy to say that. So, where the situation is, as was reported at previous meetings, in terms of we have an ongoing lottery application to meet part of the funds required to pay for the necessary building work. We've, and also just to say to that as well, we also have also, oh. Is that better, can I? Okay, good, good. And just to say, so in addition to that, the funds have been just also set aside within the council's own reserves to help to fund the necessary work, but we want, before we can proceed any further, we need, we want to establish if we will receive lottery funding and how much that funding will be, so that remains the priority for the officers in the here and now. Now, the lottery have asked us to send effectively more up-to-date information really, but that requires, you know, therefore that requires the work that was done before to be effectively updated and obviously we need the relevant professionals to do that. We discovered that, you know, we need to move on from the previous architect to a new one and obviously we need to move quickly on that, which we've done, we advertised straight away. The good news, I'd like to say, we've already had eight expressions of interest already within two weeks of the advert going out, so there's been a strong response and so we are confident of appointing as soon as we can. Once that, and then we'll bring a further report to June full council on how things have progressed from that point and when we'll be able to submit the final information lottery need.
And just to strengthen that to say that it is certainly the town council's strong priority, we have to get these toilets replaced, there is no option but do that, it's a priority and it's important for officers and members together to say, we've got to sort it out and soon.
I think councillor Dunn wants to speak, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Regarding 2.6, 2.6D, I mean, obviously the decision to use the Martello Eastfield for an overflow car park if you like, and we've had obviously concerns from different residents. My biggest issue with anything on our seafront, especially in the summer months when we get very busy, is the cricket field road between the two fields.
Yes.
The cars park along there and they make that extremely inaccessible because they do tend to, when we are so busy that they park on both sides. We have tried extensively to contact county council, maybe our new councillor, county council, councillor Adeniji will take this on board, but we've contacted them constantly to ask them to put double yellow lines in there, but actually to mark the lines on the, yellow lines on the pavement because that stops blue badge holders parking there as well. I feel that if we're going to use the Martello Eastfield as an overflow car park, to still allow people to park along, you know, in between the two fields, it is dangerous. Is there any, I know it's not our responsibility, but is there any way that we could monitor that again through the summer months? Thank you.
Okay, that's noted, yeah, thank you.
Yes, as we're saying, we're not encouraging people to drive to Seaford, we're recognising that a lot of people will come in as staycation Seaford and hopefully the ability to make a donation to a charity and park in the field will discourage the need to park in the road or in the roads surrounding. So, it's not an encouragement, it's just a recognition, we need, they need to park somewhere, we need to give them an easy alternative. And yes, if the county council, either with some kind of traffic order or possibly police temporary parking restrictions, it would be helpful just to kind of, to manage that. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the town clerk's report? Don't see any. We're simply asked to note the contents of this report, so everybody content for us to note the contents? Yes, either signal or wave, yes? Good. Okay, moving down the agenda. Now, item eight is now deferred. It's clearly an important item to, the standing orders are important in terms of the amount of detail, the amount of reading we need to do. Several councillors have asked for more time, this is deferred to the June meeting. So, that's, so we can pass item eight and go to item nine now. So, item nine is the scheme of delegation. Town clerk, do you want to present that to us?
Yeah, I just need to get to the right page in the report, sorry, just to.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, could you just report what you just said about standing orders? Are we all actually deferring that till another meeting?
23rd of June full council, because we have another full council a month after this meeting.
Yep.
We're deferring it to that meeting because we think that's sufficiently soon.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, would it be possible for officers to send out to all councillors the actual updated NALC model? I mean, councillors, you can get it on the NALC's website, but I've been having a bit of trouble, I spoke to George about this, I have been having a bit of trouble logging in and if you can't get in, you can't see any of the documents. I requested it from George, could we possibly send out the NALC model to all councillors so they can have a good understanding of what NALC recommends and how it reflects on the changes that we've been given this evening? Thank you.
Perhaps we just need a web link to the, rather than sending out hard copies, we could simply have a web link to that part of the site.
Yeah, very happy to do that and just to be, just for absolute clarity, one of the reasons for deferring this item is so, we've had some, we've had some feedback about the current proposal if you like, which obviously we can share with all councillors, you know, ahead of the next meeting, but we would say if there's any other queries or feedback, please do send that in to us so we can accommodate it within the further report that we will issue to the full June council meeting. So, we're giving councillors a couple more weeks effectively to send in any further comments on the standing orders so then we can send an updated report to you all ahead of the meeting on the 23rd of June.
Because that was the common request, was more time, just more time to read around as councillor Dunn is saying and more time to consider what's in the pack.
Yeah.
And, yes, as the clerk is saying, we've got opportunities to see the report updated before we get to the deadline for papers for the June full council meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on to item nine, the scheme of delegation. Town clerk, anything to say in introducing this?
As I say, this is, as you've seen from the report, this is an up, this is to up, this again, the scheme of delegation obviously is, if you like, a permanent document if that makes sense and iteratively amended and so the latest iteration is what's presented to you this evening. I hope you've had a chance to study this and I'm happy to take any questions or comments from the floor.
councillor Dunn, yes, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor and town clerk. 2.7, grievance disciplinary subcommittee. I do know a while back in November that we were going to, I know we're not planning that tonight, we've obviously approved the structure of the council, but I know that Georgia did mention in that November meeting, full council meeting, that the possibility of disbanding the grievance disciplinary for whatever reasons, can I be assured that we are still going to be looking into that because we've not heard anything since last November? Could I have an update on what plans are for that?
Okay, yeah, I mean, the question is noted and we'll make sure, we'll bring an update to the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, update to the next meeting. Okay, does anyone else have any queries, comments about?
councillor Adeniji wants to speak, I think.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, 3410 talks about, page 49, says in consultation with the town clerk, general manager and chair of the View to amend the opening hours of the View as necessary and that's fine, but I wondered if I can add an amendment to say and to report back to the View committee at the next available meeting, because I think it's quite important, having chaired the View before, that the committee is kept informed.
I think that's useful, I think we have that as an explanation of how it's done rather than a full amendment.
The council war room, is it all right if I also mention the points we've discussed outside this meeting as well, if that's okay? Again, I'm very grateful councillor Warraven who also gone and touched me about this item in terms of what she noticed is that when you look at the scheme of delegation, we haven't made any delegations, any officer posts with the delegations to them, we haven't made any delegations to our planning officer post. So, I think, I'm going to say, I think the reason for that is that our planning officer is fantastic, we're lucky to have such an expert and he does a brilliant job advising and supporting the committee. And I suppose in the practice of his role, that's what he tends to be doing and so the decision-making is still less with the councillors if you like, so we have identified anything to delegate to them, but I think it's a really fair question. So, as chair of that committee and town clerk, we've agreed, we're going to go in and have a look at that and it may be we bring an updated version of this report to the June full council meeting if there are any delegated powers appropriate to the planning officer. So, we'd like to proceed with this report and pass it through council tonight, but then we may bring a further amendment for the planning officer to the June meeting. Thank you.
So, with those two, with those.
Sorry, councillor Brown wants to speak, I think, Chair.
councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you Chair. I think what we've done here is we've brought this scheme of delegation up to the sort of current situation in the council, nearly all of these recommendations in here have already been discussed, I therefore propose that we accept it as it's written with the conversations that we've had this evening.
I think for the meeting that we've had a couple of points of clarification that can be included as a note in the minutes, but on that basis, I think councillor Brown is proposing that we adopt the scheme of delegation as presented with this report. Someone second that? councillor Webb, those in favour of that? That's carried.
That's carried.
Yes?
Yep.
That brings us on to item 10 and the, this is the revision to the committee chairs management group policy. So, this is what's set out at page 54 and 55. Town clerk, do you want to speak to this?
Again, only to say that I want to thank the members of the CCMG who've helped with the review of the policy that's, and the results of that are what's presented to this meeting tonight. Again, I hope councillors have the opportunity to look at the report and I'm happy again to take any questions or comments that councillors have. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Borman?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I was just wondering, it's 3.1 now, that the notes aren't going to be made available to councillors anymore. Can I ask why that is? Because it was quite nice actually seeing the sort of the minutes to the meetings each month, so I just wondered why that's being taken out now. Thank you Chair.
I think, given that I have been chairing the CCMG, it was on the basis that we were looking to the committee chairs to engage the councillors from the committees and for the chairs to bring it to the CCMG and then to pass it back out to members. That was the rationale behind it. I mean, this is simply a proposal, it isn't saying we have to do it like this, but the proposal is to try and have the committee chairs more, what do we say, have them as the kind of link between the councillors and the CCMG rather than everybody involved with the CCMG directly. That's the explanation for it. You can propose a different way if you like. Anyone else with a query, comment? No?
No.
Okay, so, full councillors recommended to adopt the committee chairs management group policy as presented with report 7/21. Someone propose that for me?
councillor Payne?
councillor Payne, someone second that? councillor Ali Hyder, let's have a vote, those in favour? That's carried.
That's carried Chair.
Now, we're moving on to item 11, we're on page 56 in the pack. The single-use plastics policy review and the recommendation is we adopt the single-use plastics policy as updated and attached as report 921. I think with this, we would perhaps want to commend one of our local experts for her input to this.
Yep. Yes, absolutely, so we asked Plastic Free Seaford for some input to this and they've been really helpful. I was like to thank the expert officer who's put those, collated those thoughts into the updated policy that we see presented this evening, good partnership working.
Anyone with questions or comments about the report, the policy as now updated? councillor Olivia Honeyman?
On page 58, I just wondered whether we could actually have a list in the policy of where the actual locations are of the actual refuel stations and then whether they can then be updated and actually put in here?
I think that would be, that would be a good move to have a list and perhaps the map to say where they are. I think, you know, we had troubles in the past in trying to work in it where the defibrillators were, it would be useful to have a note and a map to say where. the defibrillators were. It would be useful to have a note and a map to say where the refill points are, especially for people coming to the town to know where to find them. I think that's a... Something easily incorporated with this. Any other comments, suggestions, questions? No? I think it's a good piece of work, and I think what town clerk was saying, it's a good piece of cooperation with a voluntary group in the town to see this revised and brought up to date. So if someone proposed that we adopt the single-use plastics policy as presented with the report, councillor Olivia Honeeman's going to hand up, councillor Morek evidence seconding that. If those in favour, please show.
That's carried.
That's carried. We're coming on to item 12, which is the government's call on evidence on remote meetings. And there's been some quite strong feelings about this in terms of whether we should be obliged to be in a meeting like this, when some of us are not that well, but there's no way to be contributing, to be able to vote unless you're actually sitting in the room. Town clerk, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So we wanted to make sure that councillors had an opportunity to, for their views to be heard, if you like, and for that to then be submitted into the government consultation. And again, I'm very grateful to the executive officer for her help in putting, collating together a draft that you've seen attached this evening. So we brought the previous draft of this report, so of this consultation feedback, if you like, or input, to the April full council meeting. We're grateful for any feedback we've received since then. And so this evening, really, we wanted to see if there's any further amendments needed to this before we actually submit it. Just in case councillors are wondering, the consultation opened on the 25th of March, and it runs for 12 weeks. So I think we're eight weeks in tonight, and the closing date will be the 17th of June. So we'd like to get it in really in the next week or two. So this would really come back to you guys again and check to see if there's any further change you'd like to see before we submit this on behalf of the town council. Thank you.
Yes, just to reinforce the point, what's here at the moment is a draft that could be submitted, but it could also be improved on. Councillor Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Sorry. Regarding question 11, you know, about those that are not well and have had health issues or are in a caring capacity, or actually live with people that are vulnerable, you know, we could have attended, like councillor Cash did this evening, by remote meeting and participate, but we wasn't allowed to vote, and I find that quite discriminatory, because, you know, I made an effort to come. I mean, I've had dialysis this afternoon, and really was quite washed out, but really felt it was important that I come and cast my vote. And you've made a lot of effort, I spoke to George, and I've been made a lot of effort, you know, I've been given this separately. Is there any way that we can feed that back to them? Because if they change a couple of words in the legislation, then it would address the fact that if you really have got a valid health reason for not attending, you could still vote by remote meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. So I think we can incorporate that into the answers, what you've just said is the answer to question 11. So we'll consider that, you know, an amendment to the report. Anybody else?
Oh, sorry, councillor Honeeman, go for it.
I know it's already noted on page 70, but I just thought we could add on page 65 under question three, where it says create some more accessible meeting format, where it says health problems or mobility issues, but also if you've got caring responsibilities as well.
Yeah.
So I know I spoke to another councillor from another area the other day, and he said he's going to try and push that. He can't leave his partner, so he said, can that... So I sort of like that's something else. We could reiterate the fact, it's already been put on page 70, but in that piece as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll add it there as well. Thank you.
I think perhaps if we could say a 10-day deadline from now for people to give more input to the officers?
Yeah, that's fine. We say everyone's heard the two changes we're making based upon this discussion. We'll send it... Yeah, I would say, I'll go eight days, Friday next week.
Okay.
Okay, will be the final deadline.
So we'll work on the basis that anyone who wants to add to this response, please detail to the town clerk within, before Friday week, week tomorrow, and then that will be the version that goes. Everyone will get a copy of what's actually submitted.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we agree that the response is now explained in terms of it will be this or it will be this with whatever amendments come in within the next 10 days? That will be how we'll handle this. You content to have... Can someone propose and second that? Councillor Borman, councillor Olivia Honeeman, those in favour? Okay, thank you, that's carried.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to 12, now on 13, insurance arrangements. And this is simply to note the information regarding the town's insurance arrangements. And they are, as the papers say... Councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And a lot of work's been put into this by Lucy Clark, the finance manager, and also by House Martin. We've now got a reliable update on what our assets are actually worth so that we can set a realistic insurance premium based on those facts. So well done.
Yeah, I agree. A critical piece of work, and it's good if we've got it completed.
Okay, well, another compliment for the officers. So...
I propose we note the report.
Yes, so we propose a note. This is... Councillor Meek, come and speak.
Thank you, Chair. I do understand that you have to kind of over-insure things. I think, though, that some of these valued judgments are quite extraordinary. I can't imagine that the Scout Hut is worth £650,000 as a commodity to insure. It's kind of free-fabricated concrete and asbestos roof. I just wonder if some of these are slightly inflated, but I understand we have to insure, but I just wanted to say that as a comment, that it appeared to me that is a huge... I mean, that's more than my house is worth. I mean, it's just unbelievable.
I think the question is, how do we come at insurance valuations?
Yeah, and in this case, we've used to recognise local expert on that matter. So I feel we...
Yes, I think we can't go with other than on the basis of expert advice, and that was the expert advice, I think, is as far as that comment can go. So are you content to note the information regarding the town council's insurance arrangement? Someone propose that? Councillor Webb, councillor Borman, those in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you. And we come to item 14. I now need to move the exclusion of the press and the public. So accordance with the Public Bodies Admission to Meetings Act 1960, I propose the press and the public be excluded from the meeting during the discussion of the next two items of business, as per the reasons set out below. The resolutions will be publicly recorded in the minutes. The proper officer considers that discussion of the following items likely to disclose exempt the information as defined in the Local Government Act 1972. The protection legislation may therefore need to take place in private session. Exempt information reasons are shown alongside each item below. Furthermore, in relation to paragraph 10 of Schedule 12A, it's considered that the public interest in maintaining exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing the information. So on that basis, I move to exclude the press and the public from the meeting. Someone second that? Okay, those in favour? Thank you. I'm sorry, my friend, it's time for you to leave.